Hello and welcome. What do you know, we're back. Hope you are doing well. Thank you for joining us. And terribly excited for tonight, this morning, this noon hour, to be known when you're watching this adventure. So thank you for joining us and look forward to today's chapters in the book of Judith, The Journey Continues. I hope and pray you've been well and I pray that just yeah, that in the midst of the journey that is life, that we're able to cling to Christ and to be a people of faith and hope and love in the midst of the journey, in the midst of the struggle and the adventure. A special blessing in my life recently had the opportunity to hang out with a few of my college friends. And it was particularly inspiring and renewing. There's about, there were seven of us who got together. And between the seven of us, we had thirty-one kids. And of the seven of us, I was, I was the first married. So everyone married since, since, since me. And between the, between each of us, we had thirty-one kids. And of those four en route, are in the womb. But it was just, it was such a glorious time. And I think there's something that's, that's ever renewing about just the witness of, in this case, men, but men or women, but, but men who are authentically seeking the Lord, seeking holiness, imperfect and making mistakes, but yearning to grow in their own life as, as a man, as a husband and as a father. And so, just, just so inspiring. And so I definitely feel challenged and encouraged and renewed. And plus, we had a lot of fun. But yeah, it's just something, something so beautiful about authentic witness. And, and so that was a special blessing of the past week. Other big news, my daughter Emma turned four, which is hard to believe. When I first started doing, doing work here at OPH, Emma wasn't even born yet. So I'm old, the years are flying. So yeah, so we celebrate her birthday. So that was, that was a lot of fun. Nothing like a whole bunch of three and four-year-old girls going hard with lots of candy at your house. So that was a, a, a beautiful blessing. So much, much to be thankful for. Let's pray and let's dive on in. In the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen. Poor God, we just, we come before you this day. We ask for your blessings to be upon us. We lift up to you whatever's going on in our lives, the good and the bad and the ugly and everything in between. And we just return to you for, for grace, for your grace, for your strength. Pray for the gift of perseverance in the midst of the storm. Pray for just a stirring in our hearts, a desire to, to, to grow, to become the man and the woman that you're calling each of us to be, to, to set aside mediocrity and lukewarmness, to set aside the excuses. Our, our world offers us a lot of excuses and the devil's more than happy to, to play those up in our lives. And just pray for that, that grace, to see it for what it is, that, that nothing should separate us from the love of God. Nothing should separate us from you. It's just not worth it. There's plenty of excuses to be had, but they, but they fail in the end. Nothing, nothing is worth separating us from the love of you, God. And so that's our heart's prayer this evening. We also pray, as you said, that as we continue to journey in your word, that as always, your word could come alive and speak to us and stir our hearts and call us to conversion, help us to shine light. You got some of those excuses that we, we've been in the habit of making of late. So we ask these things to Jesus in your holy name, in the session of our blessed mama, as we pray together. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. So where we last left off, things were in fairly dire straits, okay? We've now covered Judith, chapters one through seven, beginning of chapter eight tonight. And things aren't looking so hot, right? That things have gone steadily worse from just a vague, a vague foreboding, an enemy in the distance, to now them on your doorstep, having laid siege to you. And you are now dying in the streets, passing out the streets from hunger and thirst. And your resolve and your will is weakening. And so it kind of came to head there at the end of chapter seven, where the people come to the leaders and they say, "God would want us to surrender." Right? How, and it's your fault, but God would want us to surrender. Let's, let's salvage what, what left we have in our lives. Let's surrender. It'll be ugly, but we don't want to die of hunger and thirst, essentially, right? And so, and I think it's interesting, right? They're, they're kind of, I would argue in a sense, almost asking for a strength in the leaders that they themselves don't have. I think that's interesting, right? I think sometimes, you know, when we turn to, to those that are in places of authority and leadership, on the, on the one hand, like at face value, we're asking for permission for the easy way out. I think, but, but, but which, which is the one half of it. But I think the other half of it is like, it's almost as though we're asking like, please, like be strong for me when I am weak, right? I, I, I'm turning to you as leader to help me, right, to, to see and know the truth, to give me a strength, give me a courage that I myself don't possess. Obviously, they're not articulating that, but I think that's a, almost like an implied, you know, deeper desire, right? On the one hand, sure, like give me the easy way out. Like, yeah, I'll take that, which is part of it. But I think the other part though is, is like, like a no, like I need, like I, I know it's right, but I'm faltering, I'm failing. And so like, like give me, give me that deeper strength, that courage, that, that know-how, whatever it is, to get me through this. And so the leaders speak and, oh, classic leader, right? They, they talk out of both sides of their mouth, right? So the one hand, they're like, hey, come on now, God's gonna provide for us. We got this. But if God doesn't, sure, let's surrender. Not that like I would do any better, but you know, it's somewhat of a cop-out, right? So it's like, yes, God's gonna provide, but if he doesn't, yes, let's surrender and abandon all hope. There's a, yeah, a little bit, yeah, there's the hypocrisy, if you will, the yeah, the disconnect in their advice to the people. And so the people go home with that happy news. All right. Hopefully God's gonna do something, but if he doesn't, we have five more days of suffering and then we'll surrender, in which our suffering will be different, but also terrible. Okay? And so it's in this dark hour, right? In this, in this dire circumstance, that we finally meet the main character for which the book is named, Enrides Judith. So who is Judith? And how in the heck is one person, a woman of all people, being sarcastic? Cultural context of the day, right? But how is this, how is the title of this book Judith, who is she? How can she possibly save the day? We, we were facing impossible odds, not just long odds, but like impossible odds. Chapter eight, dun, dun, dun. At that time, Judith heard about these things. She was the daughter of Mirai, the son of Oax, the son of Joseph, son of Oziel, son of Elchaya, son of Ananias, son of Gideon, son of Raphaen, son of Ahitub, son of Elijah, son of Hilkiah, son of Eliub, son of Nathaniel, son of Samuel, son of Sarasodai, son of Israel. Her husband Manasseh, who belonged to her tribe and family, had died during the barley harvest. For as he stood overseeing the men who were binding sheaves in the field, he was overcome by the burning heat and took to his bed and died in Bethulia, his city. So they buried him with his fathers in the field, between Thothan and Balamon. Judith had lived at home as a widow for three years and four months. She set up a tent for herself on the roof of her house and belted sackcloth about her loins and wore the garments of her widowhood. She fasted all the days of her widowhood, except the day before the Sabbath and the Sabbath itself, the day before the new moon, the day of the new moon, and the feast and days rejoicing in the house of Israel. She was beautiful in appearance, a very lovely face. She was prudent of heart, discerning in judgment and quite virtuous. Her husband Manasseh, the son of Joseph, the son of Ahitab, son of Melchius, son of Eliub, son of Nathaniel, son of Sarasodai, son of Simeon, had left her gold and silver and many women slaves and cattle and fields. She maintained this estate. No one spoke ill of her, for she feared God with great devotion. All right, so we meet Judith, right? She enters the stage left, okay? And so what, what do we need to know about her? She's amazing, right? She's a, a wonderful woman, right? Well-rounded and a woman of, of character and strength and virtue. Sadly, she's a widow, her husband's passed away. And she grieves for him and she honors him in a, in a special way. And she's beautiful, right? Quite beautiful. She's wealthy. But, but, but more than just that, right? She's, she's, she's got, she carries, she has some weight to her. Some weight of that character, of substance, right? Prudent of heart, discerning in judgment and quite virtuous, right? That's a, that's quite a powerful combination. And then on top of that, you know, there again, towards the end in verse eight. "No one spoke ill of her, for she feared God with great devotion." That's a beautiful line, right? I mean, what, what did those days could be said about you and I, at least me, right? There's a few people who are, don't struggle with speaking ill of me, right? But I, I love that, right? Because she feared God with great devotion, right? There's something to be said for that, right? Someone who just like recklessly, completely, totally, right? Loves the Lord, right? And so people see that and they can't help but be like, I, I can't say anything bad, right? This is a woman of, of, of worth, of dignity, of virtue, who loves the Lord, right? So yeah, quite a strong affirmation of her, which is great. But I, but, right? How the heck does this solve our problem? It doesn't. Like, at least at face value, right? Okay, that's great if we're needing some spiritual direction, if we're needing some talk on, on womenly virtue, but we don't. We've got hollow furnace knocking on the front door with this army like locus that swarms the dust of the earth, right? And you're, you've got a famine, all right? So what is, what is one woman? Even one woman of virtue and character against that, right? This, this evil military horde, right? And a people who are withering and losing strength by the day, by the moment, right? Interesting, right? So we're intrigued, right? Who is this woman? She's amazing, but I, how is that going to help us? Verse nine. "When Judith heard the wicked words spoken by the people against the ruler, because they were faint for lack of water, and when she heard all that Uzziah said to them, and how he promised them under oath to surrender the city to the Assyrians after five days, she sent her maid, who was in charge of all she possessed, to summon Chabriss and Charmis, the elders of her city. They came to her, and she said to them..." All right, so I find this an interesting point, okay? She she has the courage, if you will, to, to summon the leaders of the city, okay? Again, I think a lot of us, we, we're, we're a, we're a couch quarterback. We're, right? We're, it's easy, right? We're sitting at home drinking our beer, being like Tony Romo, Troy Aikman. Whatever. Yeah, whatever. The, it's so easy, right? To sit back there and be like, idiots, I would do it better, right? And yet, should, rather than just sit back and complain, like clearly they should have done, done something differently. No, like she does something about it, right? She hears this and rather than just speak ill of them, rather than just complain, rather than just like whine, right? She sins for them, right? She does something about it, right? And so I, I, I love that, right? Nowadays, idiot, talk is cheap, right? It's so easy to whine and complain and gripe about whatever's going on. And there's plenty to complain about, like there's no shortage. But, but how quick are we to do something about it, right? And granted, sure, like there's a lot of things that we can't do about, things about, but there's plenty that we can. Are we doing what we can with what we've got, right? With, in our part of the vineyard? Or is it just ceaseless complaining? And so right away, like I love that about her, right? She sees a problem. In this particular case, she's like, hey, there's something potentially I can do about it. And so I'm going to do, I'm gonna do something. And ah, I think we're paralyzed at times by just this, we're surrounded by problems, we talk about it, but we, but do something about it? Right? Is this, is this an easy thing for her to do, right? Well, well, I think there, there's, there's the fact that, like, they're the rulers, they'll, they're the elders, they know what's going on, right? Why would they listen to her? The whole city wants this, okay? So this isn't a, this isn't an easy thing to combat. And yet she has that, that, that courage to, to invite them to come to her house to talk to her. And they do. And there again, I think is a, a small but interesting point, which, which kind of under affirms that, that first paragraph we just discussed in chapter eight, in that, in all likelihood, are they gonna go just to any woman's house in this, in this moment, right? Like this isn't, this is a dire, a dire moment in their, in the, in the fate of their people, okay? And so the fact that they take the time to come to her house says something, says something that her words matter, like, and that, like, that's the gift of her character, right? And so I, I think, you know, we, I think hopefully we, we know people in our life that because of the way in which they live their life, their words take on a different meaning, right? Because they've, because they've, they've, they've put in sweat equity, their blood, sweat and tears, because it's, it's lived in their life. And I, I think in some ways, it's again, a parallel to what we already talked about in the book of Tobit, right? And Tobit and Tobias's relationship. And, and the weight of Tobit, Tobit's words to Tobias, because it's something that's lived. And so here again, I think part of the reason why they come to her is because when she speaks, it means something, right? Because of her life, right? And so again, I think a challenge to all of us is like, what is my, what is the witness of my life say, right? Am I a man of integrity? Am I a woman of integrity? Am I word, right? In my witness, is there anything about my life that says I'm different than the culture, right? And if there's not, like that's a, especially in today's culture, that's a problem, right? And so, yes, so should she invite them and they respond, and I'd argue they respond because of her witness, her character. So what is she gonna say to them? How will they, how will they respond to her word? What does she, what does she have up her sleeve? Continue on in verse 11. "Listen to me, rulers of the people of Bethulia. What you've said to the people today is not right. You've even sworn and pronounced this oath between God and you, promising to surrender the city to our enemies, lest the Lord turns and helps us within so many days. Who are you that have put God to the test this day and are setting yourselves up in the place of God among the sons of men? You are putting the Lord Almighty to the test, but you'll never know anything. You cannot plumb the depths of the human heart nor find out what a man is thinking. How do you expect to search out God, who made all these things, and find out his mind or comprehend his thought? No, my brethren, do not provoke the Lord, our God, to anger. For if he does not choose to help us within these five days, he has power to protect us within any time he pleases or even to destroy us in the presence of our enemies. Do not try to bind the purpose of the Lord, our God. For God is not like man to be threatened, nor like a human being to be worn over by pleading. Therefore, while we wait for his deliverance, let us call upon him to help us. He will hear our voice if it pleases him." She goes on, let's, let's pause there for a second. All right, we, we, we finally, we finally get to hear her talk, right? And not, not only does she talk, she, she roars, okay? What, so what does she call them on, right? I think in this paragraph, part of the heart of her argument is she's like, let me ask you a question. Do you even understand yourself? Like, do you know the man in the mirror, in the mirror? Do, do you know yourself? Do you know what it means to be man? Do you know what it means to be human? Arguably, no, there's a lot lacking, okay? And so if you can't fully understand yourselves, how do you fully expect to understand God, right? How about we continue to put our hope and trust in him? Yes, the hour is dire, like the hour is short, okay? But that, that does not excuse us from abandoning hope. God's gonna act however he acts whenever he acts, because his plans are not my plans. And so in the meantime, let us trust the Lord. Let us put our confidence in him. I love that line, right? In verse 16. "For God is not like man." All right, and, and thank God, right? That's, that's good news, right? God, God does not act like you and I. And if we did, right? We, in the words of, of Hulk in the, in the Avengers movie, right? When he's thrashing Thor, not Thor, sorry, Loki, puny god, right? Like sometimes they, we, we lower, we limit our god. We, we, we lower him and and we, we, we act as like he's just like a guy, but like extra, a little bit extra powerful. And like that reminder, God is not like us, like he doesn't, he doesn't think like us, doesn't act like us. And that's, that's a good thing, but like we, but like, God, God invites us into the deep, like he, he, and you, you see that, you see that in the gospels, right? With the apostles, right? He's just constantly pushing them over the edge, right? To see not as man sees, to think not as man thinks, like, but to have this, this, a confidence to come from, that comes from God, that comes from Jesus Christ. Not, not quite the same here, but, but, but kind of echoed when you have in, in the book of Samuel, when Samuel's sent by God to the house of Jesse tonight and knew king over Israel, right? And Samuel's like, oh, clearly the eldest, he looks the part, like this is it. And God's like, no, 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 no. Right? God judges not as man judges. Man judges on outward appearance, God judges the heart, right? And so she's trying to, she's calling them to this, right? God's got a plan here. God is God, right? And if we, if we, if we believe what we say we believe, that we are his chosen people, that, that, that he loves us, that he cares for us, he can provide for us, like let us continue to place our trust in him. And it might look dire and, and, but like God works things for his good. And who knows? Like, I, I love her comments. She's like, even, even our destruction might be what we need. Like, like sure, we prefer salvation, but, but, but again, like God's so amazing that even our destruction could be a blessing. And so there's, there's, there's that, that confidence and that purity of her faith. It's like, what a witness to the elders, okay? And so, yeah, so she's, she's calling them to trust and faithfulness, like now, like the, the more dire things get, is not an excuse to give up hope, like double down. Let's place our hope and confidence, trust in God, surely he will act, even if he doesn't, I still believe that he's got a plan, right? That's my hope, that's my trust, that's my rock, that's my strength, that's my salvation. And then two, okay, like God, like we, 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 we struggle to understand ourselves, can't even understand our fully man. Like how can we pretend to fully know God? And so again, so then let's put our trust in him, right? Yeah, verse 17, I love it, right? "Therefore, while we wait for his deliverance, let us call upon him to help us. He will hear our voice if it pleases him." Okay? Like that's the answer, okay? A call for perseverance. And, and it's, it's, it's something that we, I think we know, but we, we always need, we always need reminding of that, right? I'm good for, I'm good about the first day, I might be good on the second day, but how about day twenty-four, day forty, right? Ah, perseverance, it's hard, right? And I think that's one of the tactics of the devil, right? Is he, he wants us to give up, he wants us to throw in the towel, right? But, 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 but like, is it worth it? Like what are we throwing in the town too? Like, is this struggle, is this fight worth it? Like yes, like let's double down, let's persevere. Continue on, verse 18. "For never in our generation, nor in these present days, has there been any tribe or family or people or city of ours which worshiped gods made with hands, as was done in days gone by. And that was why our fathers were handed over to the sword, to be plundered, as they suffered a great catastrophe before our enemies. But we know no other God but him. Therefore we hope that he will not disdain us or any of our nation. For if we are captured, all Judea will be captured, our sanctuary will be plundered. He will exact us the penalty for its desecration, and the slaughter of our brethren, and the captivity of the land, the desolation of our inheritance. All this, he'll bring upon our heads among the Gentiles, wherever we serve as slaves. We shall be an offense and a reproach in the eyes of those who acquire us. For our slavery will not bring us into favor, but the Lord of God will turn it to dishonor." Oh, there again, right? She's, she's not giving them any slack, right? She's like, do you realize the words that are coming out of your mouth? Essentially, right? Like this, this great solution is, so we're gonna surrender to our enemy. One, our, our enemy wants more than anything for that to happen and he's gonna wreck us. And then two, like how is that gonna help us in our relationship with God? If we're basically like abandoning our, our hope and trust in him, right? And so like, are you, like how much fun is it gonna be to live with yourself as a slave, right? Having lost everything that was good and beautiful to you, right? And knowing that you've like betrayed and abandoned your god, like that's what you're offering is this great solution? Like, come again, come again, right? And, and, and a reminder that like, we've been there and done that. Look at our history, look at the times when, when we've fallen. Like it's not been good, like the solution's not to fall, like the solution is perseverance. The solution is trust. Like if you know anything about our history, right? Our sins have had consequences, right? Like how can you commit evil and expect this good result? Like that's, that's not our solution, right? Live in truth, right? Know your history and have confidence in our god, right? So like, I don't know about you, but like, ah, Judith, right? She comes out swinging, right? And she's giving the old one-two punch. She's not, she's not getting, she's not got that many slack. She's, she's holding there, she's holding them to the fire. Reading on, verse 24. "Now therefore brethren, let us set an example to our brethren, for their lives depend upon us. The sanctuary, the temple and the altar rest upon us. In spite of everything, let us give thanks to the Lord, our God, who is putting us to the test as he did our forefathers. Remember what he did with Abraham, how he tested Isaac? What happened to Jacob in Mesopotamia and Syria, while he's keeping the sheep of Laban, his mother's brother? For he's not tried us with fire, as he did them, to search their hearts, nor has he taken revenge upon us. But the Lord scourges those who draw near to him, in order to admonish them." Right? The first two paragraphs weren't enough, like once again, she takes them to the woodshed, right? And ah, what a great, what a great paragraph. Couple things. One, she says this, what if, just throwing this out here, what if? Couple things, one, she says this, what if, just throwing this out here, what if we were an example to everyone else? Like, sure, hard times, things aren't ideal, but, but what if we use that as an opportunity to, to, to grow in holiness and virtue, to like, to still make the right choice? And like, what if by our example, like, we can encourage others and it can spread? Like, how is this solution when things get hard, like, for, as, as leaders, as someone in authority, to, to, to crumble, right? This is precisely the hour we need a, we need strong, authentic leadership, right? Now is the time to be, to, to be greater, not worse. Uh, so that's one, and then two, again, she teaches them, she gives them a, a history lesson, a theology lesson. She's like, let's see here for a second, let's think, right? Did anyone in our history, would the, did he ever experience any hardship, any struggles, any testing by God? Yes, essentially everyone, right? Pick any character from the Old Testament, from Adam to here, right? Like, what we're undergoing right now is nothing new, right? That, which of our ancestors have not experienced trial, tribulation, toil, testing, right? We're not alone in this. And so, ah, like, that, that, that's powerful, like, I, I think sometimes we, we, we allow whatever hardships, whatever challenges we have in our life, as an excuse to like, well, and we like, we give up. We, well, like, like, how does, how does life being hard give us an excuse to do what's wrong and evil, right? Doesn't make it easy, it's still hard, but like, how, how does that, how does that give us cover to, 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 to do what we know is wrong? And, and, and so that's, that's, that's the reminder of, of, of the characters of the Old Testament, it's the reminder of the saints, right? Is, is, cuz the devil's like there, and he's like, oh, but this excuse, oh, but this excuse, and we're like, oh, you're right. Right? And so like, sorry, God, but this, right? And, and it does not, it doesn't work. It, I mean, it, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't hold, like, like, what are, what, what are we willing, what excuse are we willing to put forward to separate us from the love of God, right? To deny him, to reject him, to fall, it's like, nothing's worth it, right? No matter how hard it is, right? Not only that, but I, I love the example of Abraham, right? Did, was, was Abraham ever tested, right? And so like, are, are we any different than him? And, and, and not just that, but like, but look at the, like, there's fruit that comes through the trial, right? Through the tribulation, right? I mean, the, the epic story of Abraham, right? Throughout his life, right, I'm gonna give you descendants as numerous as the stars of the sky. But I have no kids, God, oh, I know, but, but, but I'm gonna give you descendants as numerous as the sands of the sea shore. Um, so like, what about my servant Eliezer? No, you, Abraham, you and your wife, you will have a son, okay? Maybe God needs some help, come here, Hagar. Hello, Ishmael, my somewhat illegitimate son through Hagar. God's like, no, Abraham, you and your wife, Sarah will have a son. In their old age, Isaac, right? Abraham holds the impossible, right? Uh, almost a, a lifelong promise, right? Uh, and it comes to fruition, and with that coming to fruition, like, if this is true, what else, right? The stars of the sky, right? Here's, here's that first star, right? In the past, arguably, this outlandish promise, but now the impossible's been made possible, and so what else, right? And so like, dang, and then, and then God talks to Abraham that fateful day and says, Abraham, I want you to take your son, your only son, your beloved son. I want you to do sacrifice unto me, right? Was that a hard test, right? If God had asked him to sacrifice Sarah, it's like, well, she's old. But no, this is Isaac, like, this has been the lifelong promise, this is like the direction his entire life, he feels like God's been calling him. He doubted, God was faithful, boom, it happens, and then God says, I want you to lay down your son's life for me. Right? Like, well, I, we, we can't even fully begin to comprehend, like, the, 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 the thought process, I feel like, that Abraham walks through, right? And so like, he takes his sign, he goes on a journey, a journey for several days, they go to the land of Moriah. They leave their servants there at the base of the mountain, and him and his son walk that hill. Isaac carries the wood of the sacrifice. Dad, we have the wood, we have the fire, we have the knife, where, what are we gonna sacrifice? Abraham says, God himself will provide the sacrifice. Right? And so that, 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 that walk up that hill, right? Um, that, that, that testing of Abraham, right, that, that, that trial, right? How much, how much is, how much does Abraham love God? God's, God gave him the greatest gift in the world, and then, and then he's asking for it back. Abraham, do you love me, the giver of every good and perfect gift, or the gift? Right? And so, in so many ways, that, that, you know, the, the man that walks to Moriah, and the man that leaves, right? I, I like, it's two different people, right? There, there, there's the, the, the hypothetical, there's the in theory, and then there's the, the, there's, there, there's having walked, walked through the fire. And just, just that, that moment, like, that epic moment, like, I think you, you can almost hear it in God's response to him, like, at the end of that chapter, uh, this is my translation to it, but like, I, but God basically says, Abraham, because you did this, because you held nothing back, not even your own son, your only beloved son, you know what, Abraham? Neither will I, neither will I. I, I won't ask of you, what, what I won't myself do. And so Abraham, because you did this, you held nothing back, not even your son, I too will give my son. I'll give my son Abraham for your redemption, and your son's redemption, and the redemption of your entire lineage, every star in the sky, because of this act of faith. Because it wasn't easy, because you had every excuse to make, and yet you chose me above everything else. Right? And that's, that's the timeless story of Abraham. And that's what Judith is reminding these elders about that day. She's like, look at Abraham, like, did he have it easy? And yet he's our hero, right? We're now the, right now, we're the main characters in the story. God is asking something very hard of us. But, but just cuz it's hard, doesn't mean we have the excuse to take the easy way out, right? Look at the fruit this brought in Abraham's life. Look at, look at the fruit brought in Jacob's life, look at the fruit brought, pick any of our other ancestors, right? There's the gift of the refiner's fire, like gold tested in fire, right? Each of us, we have it, we, we have our, our faults and failures, we have our incurities, our weaknesses, our biases. And sometimes it's precisely in the struggle, in the fire, in the testing, that we're purified. Those, those things are, are burned away, and we're left stronger for it, right? It's, it, in the end, it can be that, that, that gift and that blessing, right? And so, I, 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 I love that, she's, she's, in a sense, arguing, like, it's precisely because it's hard, that God's, in a certain way, he's saying how much he loves you. The Lord scourges those who draw near to him, right? It's, it's, I don't know, it's like, like your son and daughter who you're raising, like, do you want good enough, right? Like, 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 how do you not want the best for your son and daughter? And, and so like, I think something similar to us, right? And so, and, and sometimes it, it, we wanna admit it, we, we, we'd like it to be the, the simpler, easier way, but it's precisely, it's precisely in the struggle that, 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 that helps us, that, that, that brings that clarity, that brings that, that deepening. Um, and so I think, you know, in, in some ways, you know, maybe that's what we, we could be experiencing right now, like, for many of us, like, we're experiencing a struggle, a hardship, um, it's not easy. There, there's been sacrifices and pain that have come from the, these last few months, with, with all that is twenty-twenty and Corona. Um, and, and so, um, and yet, I, I, I think God can work beautiful fruit from amidst that, that suffering, that hardship, right? It can be a way to draw us back to him, to remind us that the things of this world will not satisfy the deepest longings of the human heart. It, it helps to elucidate, what are our priorities, what am I living for? Um, it can, it can remind us of the gifts that we've been given, the things that we've taken for granted, right? And so, I think there's, there's so much fruit that comes from the struggle. I think that's what, that what Judith's reminding them of in this moment, in this dark, dire hour. And I think it's a reminder that we, each of us needs to hear, right? It, it's precisely when it's tough, and that the hour is late, and the darkness is growing, that like, God is there, and, and God is with us, and that, that like, he, he's wanting to do something beautiful in our lives, right? But, but, but sometimes that, that, that beauty's coming from that, that, that purification. Uh, and, and, and so that he, he, he can work something in our lives, like he worked in the life of Abraham, right? And, and, and look at the fruit of that, right? The, the gift of the Abrahamic covenant culminating in Genesis twenty-two, where God swears by himself and says, Abraham, because you did this, you held nothing back, not even your only beloved son. Through you, through your descendants, all the nations of the earth will find bliss. My son will lay down his life for the ransom for many, right? And, and again, I think that's what he wants to do in our lives. Alright, so Judith, as we said, took them to the woodshed. She, she obliterated them, right? I mean, she woops them up one side of the head and cross the next, right? So, what is their response? Like, I'm terribly curious, okay? Uh, she's giving them multiple reasons why they just made one of the dumbest decisions of their life, okay? And so, what will they say? And, and again, I think this is interesting, right? Like, what is our response, right? Imagine if this is addressed to us, and maybe the way that we're, that we're withering and cowering in the struggle, right? Do we heed that call, right? Or, yeah, you know, how do we respond? Let, let, let's hear what they respond first, then we'll go from there, verse twenty-eight. Then Uzziah said to her, all that you've said has been spoken out of a true heart, and there is no one who can deny your words. I love it, right? So, he's gonna say more, but, 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 but I love this, right? He's like, I can't argue with anything you said, why? Because again, it's not just empty words, but it's backed by your life. Again, we already talked about that length with Tobit, here again with Judith, right? And, and, and I think that there's a power that comes from men and women of integrity, right? Where their life backs their word, right? And so, in, in certain sense, she's gotten cornered, right? He, he's, he's, he's smart, he knows, like, there's a, there's a, a part of this that he's lost the battle. He's not gonna be able to, uh, to, to squirrel his way out of this problem, right? Um, all that you've said is spoken out of a true heart, right? I can't, I can't go against your intentions, right? And, and, and your words, I, are, 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 um, are legit. Okay, sweet, so he's gonna step up? And see what he says, this is verse twenty-nine. Today is not the first time your wisdom has been shown, but from the beginning of your life, all the people will recognize your understanding, for your heart's disposition is right. But, verse thirty. But, the people were very thirsty, and they compelled us to do for them what we had promised, and make us take an oath which we cannot break. So, pray for us, since you're a devout woman, and that the Lord will send us rain to fill our sisterns, and we will no longer be faint. Alright, I don't know, how, how does that sit with you? I don't like it, oh, it's cop out, it's weak, right? Sounds nice, sounds great, but, ugh, underneath it, not good, right? What do they say? You're a holy woman, everything you said I agree with, but we're not gonna change anything. What is that? What is that? Weak, right? Oh, it's frustrating, and, and not only that, right? But what's the, what's the fig leaf they hide behind to justify their inaction, right? We can't change action because we promised God that we would reject God. It's basically what they're saying, right? We've made an oath that in five days, we will abandon God. And so, we would be, we don't wanna dishonor God by breaking that oath. Right? You have to shake your head, uh, but, but again, it's clever, like, they're, they're, they're being sneaky, right? And again, like, that, that, that speaks to me, right? We can make an excuse for everything under the sun, right? But, but, but does it hold weight? The devil's gonna give us a thousand and one excuses that we can use, right? He's got an infinite supply of excuses if we're looking for them, right? But we're not called to make excuses, we're called to live in truth, and that's what she's calling them to, right? But, but they, 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 they wilt, they wilt under the scrutiny of truth. They, they don't have the courage to, to combat it, to, to make a rational argument, but they hide behind this weak excuse. Um, and, ah, it's frustrating, frustrating, right? So they basically pat her on the hat, head, on the hat, on the head, they, they're there, thank you, sweet Judith, we love you, thanks for being so holy. We agree with everything you said, but we're not gonna break our oath to God to abandon God, so you know what? Just go and, go and pray, and, uh, we'll see what happens, okay? So that's, that's their great response. So, back to Judith, we're Judith, okay? So, wha- what, what do we do at this point, right? You're, you're a, a, a woman in a, in a male-dominated society, and you're, you're, you're widowed. You have a, a strength of character that's, that's powerful, but, but also limited culturally, right? You've just called the elders, the leaders of the city to your house, and then they've come, and you've, 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 you've laid it all on the table. And they've agreed with everything you said, and yet they still won't change anything, like, what do you do? Like, your, 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 your legs are kinda cut out from under you, you're cut, like, what do you do? And like, here again, like, like, this is the, the wit, the witness of Judith, the gift of her, uh, um, her witnesses, that perseverance, right? She's called them to perseverance, they refused, right? But their refusal doesn't then justify her, her, her giving up. And so we're, we're, we're gonna see her persevere, even if they fail. That's what she called them to, they refuse, but their refusal doesn't then justify hers. And so like, hmm, that speaks to me, right? You know, would it, would it others, would, would it others who, who, who possess their, that position, that authority, to, to lead, to do the right thing, like, yeah, I, I, we, we desire that. But, but should they fail, like, that does not excuse you and I from doing what's good and true and right. Verse thirty-two, what does she do? Judith said to them, listen to me, I'm about to do a thing which will go down through all generations of our descendants. Stand at the city gate tonight, I will go out with my maid, and within, within the days after which you have promised to surrender the city to our enemies, the Lord will deliver Israel by my hand. Only, do not try and to find out what I planned, for I will not tell you, till I finish what I'm about to do. Alright, so she throws it right back at him. She's like, how about you? Go home and pray, and like, hold my beer, and like, I will, like, yeah, if you won't take care of it, I will, right? I'm gonna, what is she gonna do? She doesn't tell him, right? They haven't earned that privilege, right? Um, stand at the gate, tonight, me and my maid will go out, or we'll depart the city, and we will walk into the hands of the enemy. And in the number of days that you are gonna surrender, God's gonna bring you victory. I love it, right? She's got, woo, she's got some confidence, she's got some swag, right? She gives them the opportunity to do what they need to do, they refuse, right? And so she's like, fine, I'll do it, right? I will, I will march into the face of the enemy, and. And, uh, and deliver, and, yeah, through God's grace, de- deliver Israel, okay? So, confidence, love, what does she have planned? Not a clue, other than like, I'm ready, but. I, I think for most of us, right, it's our first time reading it, what, what is, I love it, right? What is one woman, one woman and her maid, right, going to do against Holofernes and his horde, right? And we, we spent the first seven chapters like, like, demonstrating the fear, the power that that is, okay? And so here she is, all right, this, and she's gonna march into the heart of the enemy. Okay? What? Like, what is she planning? Will it succeed? How will she save the day? Who is this person? Find out next week, on Judith Continued. All right, so we are sadly out of time today. Um, so, yeah, what does she have planned? Will she provide victory? How? Will she get murdered or worse, right? The journey continues, okay? But until then, right, let's turn to Judith's example in chapter eight, right? Both in her character, and her words, and her willingness to do something even if no one else will. Even if the people that should be doing it are failing, right? That's not an excuse to do what is right. Let's pray, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we give you thanks for the gift of, the book of Judith, your, for your holy word, uh, for the, for the gift that is Judith, for her witness. Um, for her strength of character, um, and for her, her, her beautiful and powerful conversation that she has with the elders of the city, in so many ways, I, 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 she's sitting at us down and talking to us, right? And, and she's calling us to live in truth. We, we, each of us have experienced challenges, hardships, testing, and, and we, 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 we grow, we get weary. We get worn down, we get exhausted, and we, we, we wanna give up, we wanna surrender, we wanna make excuses, and yet, she's reminding us um, of the truth, she's reminding us that it's not worth it, she's reminding us that God is with us, and he's gonna bring something good even amidst the struggle, and the suffering, and the sorrow, to be faithful. To, to, to cling to the witness of Abraham, to our fathers who've gone before us. And so we ask this, Jesus, in a special way, Lord God, come with your grace, come with your Holy Spirit, and stir within us that courage and that strength of Judith, to be men and women, um, to do what's right, to do what's good, to what's just, virtuous, especially in the struggle, especially when those around us are fainting and faltering. Dear God, we need men and women today, um, who, who will provide that witness. We need Judas to arise today. And so I pray for that stirring among us, so that we can do that, so that we can live it in love and truth. In your name, and for your glory, as we pray, all glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without him, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Have a beautiful day, spread the word, be sure to share, and see you next week. God bless.